With that, a call to order, the committee of the whole meeting for tonight at six oh four, September seventh. The committee of the whole is meeting today, today with the Shelby Historic Preservation Commission to discuss the topic of the old engine house built in eighteen seventy-three. So with that, to get started, we'll just have a roll call for the members that are present.
Sure.
Mr. Robb, Mr. Roberts here, Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Block.
And I'm here.
Okay. Would the city council like to say anything before we get started with the presentation?
Thank you for allowing us to meet with you tonight. I have Mary Durkin with me and Randy Samsel and in the back is Lacy Basette. Pat Carlyle is on vacation. This is the core group that makes up our Historic Preservation Commission. If you remember, about a year and a half ago, the city council gave us curfew to try to decide what we use possibilities could be for the engine house. We have kind of been at a standstill, partially because of COVID, partially because of some other activity with possibly sales going through the EMS company. So, but we felt like it was time and Mayor Scheid agreed to, that it was time to address the city council and talk about this and give you an update on things too. So, slide two, please. So to give you a little bit of background, this is a very short presentation since we do one-on-one a lot of time for discussion on this, but we decided to start calling it eighteen seventy-three Engine House. It was being called eighteen seventy-two. That's when it was built, when it was actually put into service was eighteen seventy-three. And that's the date that's on the Ohio Historic Inventory list. So from there on, we'll be calling it eighteen seventy-three Historic Engine House. It's used as an engine house, as a firehouse, for nearly a hundred and fifty years. Shelby's only firehouse. They talked at times about building a second one, but it has a materialized and they continue to build onto that building and other structures in the rear. So it's one of the oldest continuously working engine houses in the United States when it was still occupied by the Fire Department and it's one of the oldest firehouses still in existence in Ohio. And it's the oldest building on Main Street. There's another McCullough and McCullough Hotel that's, they took out that time frame, but they're both about the oldest buildings there. The next slide, please. There's a couple of historic aspects to it. The old tin metal roof is still in existence in the engine bays and so that was quite historic for that time period. And also Autocall put in a fire alarm system that was connected to the Shelby Memorial Hospital at one point. And so that was, there were other alarms in there too, but that one has survived. The Shelby Historic Preservation Commission's primary goal long-term is to protect the designation historic structure so that it continues to remain as part of the Shelby Center Historic District on the National Register. It also has meaning with FEMA regulations and restoration of the property too. The building signifies strength and resilience to Shelby and says a hand to the Shelby Historic District. Next slide, please. So the commission of the building, the building was vacated by the Fire Department in two thousand nineteen when a new engine fire station was built. It's now leased to an EMS company. An engineering study was done shortly before the Fire Department vacated the building and it indicated several things that should be brought up to date, some things that should be restored as far as maintenance and that. So based on that report and other needs, the commission came up with the following items that probably should be addressed now. The roof wasn't included in the study, but it's come up as a topic since then that it should be restored or replaced, repaired or replaced. The brick masonry repair pads, those are the areas that are above the roof on the sides of the building and then there was also a pair of pads on the front. They're in pretty bad shape. If we restore them now, it won't be nearly as expensive as if they fall and we have to basically rebuild that part of the wall. So that's why we're suggesting that it be repaired fairly soon. The north side of the building's already been repaired. The brick was actually falling down into the street and to the sidewalk and so that has been repaired. Next slide. The brick close to street level has seen deterioration from the water in the south. I think it was repointed about twenty years ago and so it's due to be repainted again. Next slide. It's another close to the street level. We were trying at one point to get a grant to bring in a stonemason to actually do a workshop and we would have people come in and help repoint the brick there. It would be an educational project for them too. And at street level, it would be very easy for us to do if we did that. Next slide. The steel drying tower on the south side of the building is actually tipping and it's separating from the building. There's actually anchor bolts that have torn away from the building. It doesn't have any historical value to it and so that could be removed at some point This is the inside brick masonry in the engine bays and it was painted a color, I think yellow, for a number of years. When you paint brick and it starts to peel off, it starts to peel off the fire part of the brick and so what's left underneath is soft brick. And so that's what's happening with that. That can be fixed too with a good stonemason and it actually can be repainted with a brick paint that will help it to breathe again and so that that can be done too. Next slide. The gas service was originally located back where the steel building was, if you remember that. So now it's by itself out in the middle of parking lot. There's actually a small dumpster that's there now that might be protecting you a little bit, but it really should be moved closer to the building. I think that's really the safety issue. If someone drove down there in the middle of the night and they didn't know that that was there, they could hit it very easily.
On that note, just so everyone knows, Columbia Gas is going to be doing a project in that area and then they'll, we'll get it moved at that time.
Awesome. Thank you. Next slide. Some things that, you know, when we're talking about reuse, at that point, some of these things should be talked about. This is the east side of the building, the one-story structure. It's a cement block, cement block structure. There's stepping in there indicating that it's actually sinking down, that part of the building. And in the report, they suggested either removing it or repairing it. It could very easily be removed. Something else could be, maybe a patio or something could be put in its place for reuse. That would have to be decided at reuse. Next slide. I'm not even sure what I can say about this portion of the building. It's a one-story state masonry addition on the south side of the building. It's been, as you can see, heavily modified over the years. There's all the floors in there, there's a step entry and it houses the first floor restroom. I asked Chief Thompson for kind of a list. Actually, I was asking him for occupancy rates if someone wanted to, wanted to use the building and actually I got some other information from you too, but that's, you know, definitely something that is not usable really for ADA purposes. If the public were to be in there, it really wouldn't be usable. Probably needs to be reformed also. Second, next slide. And then this is the dormitory area and the study said that the second floor is in good shape structurally, so that's a good thing. But it has dips and rolls on an older structure. We know that with all of older houses in town, it's just not level. And depending on what the reuse would be, you know, that would need to be addressed at that point. Electrical, water, sewer, gas service, they all need to be probably replaced or updated and talk about that during the reuse issues too. And then, slide please, thank you. And then the engine house, we know sits in a floodplain. It's been flooded several times over its lifetime. Any conversation about the reuse has to include flood mitigation. We know that. So, next slide. And then slide. So some possible sources of funding that could be used for the maintenance and the restoration of this building could be the lease. It's currently leased to the EMS company for five hundred and thirty-nine dollars a month. That's nearly four thousand six, four thou, oops, sorry, six thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year being collected on that lease. Right now, it's going into the general fund, as I understand it. If a separate line item or however that works could be used for the maintenance and restoration that's mentioned above, that could be money that's set aside for that purpose. It could also be used as a cash match for grants that we could go for. Next slide. And so that brings me to certified local government grants. As you know, a couple of years ago, we became a certified local government and that gives us another source of funding. They also fund brick and mortar projects. We actually got a grant a couple of years ago for, to create a historic preservation plan, but it can also be used for bricks and mortar. I gave you some examples on some cities that have already used it. They just got these grants this year. It can be up to twenty thousand with a sixty, forty match, which means that they would pay twenty thousand and the city or, you know, an entity would chip in the, whatever, the forty percent for any better than that. Anyway, some of the things that they've done, repaired the brick and the wrought iron, the wooden wrought iron, they've restored windows with that money and they've restored a copper roofing and stonework with it. So, next slide, please. And then another grant is the Ohio History Fund Grant. We actually just got this grant last year, the city did, to digitize the city council minutes dating back to the eighteen sixties. And so we'll be starting that project within a week or two. But you can see, they also do bricks and mortar projects, roof rehabilitation, windows. They're even replacing a steeple on the historical church. So, there's also National Park Service Grant that's minimum a hundred and twenty-five thousand and maximum five hundred thousand, fifty-fifty match. And then, this is just a really different one, but Daughters of the American Revolution, the AR. They also have a preservation grant and it does include restoration. The max is ten thousand dollars on that. I didn't see any place where you haven't matched it. It has to be sponsored by a local, the AR chapter. We do have one in Hurst County, so we could, we could go after that money. And then the other thing I included on the list was Institute of Museum and Library Services and an Ohio Humanities Grants. If it were to be turned into a museum or something like that, there's money to actually build exhibits. It wouldn't be for bricks and mortar, but it would be to construct exhibits within it. We actually have an Ohio Humanities Grant right now. The Shelby Cycle Historical Society does build temporary bicycle museum in this building. Fundraising can also be done to help with the restoration of the building. I thought about this a few years ago, I thought how much fun it would be to do a hook and ladder festival, kind of an old-time thing, but with modern firefighters. Then it could be an actual festival built around it and possibly for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary, which will be two years of the building, so. GoFundMe type things could be set up, people can all pay the account, people could put money into major donations, just like we're doing for the revitalization project. That could be done too. Okay. Go ahead. So, the commission, when we met and then we've been talking about it, we really feel like it's a desire if the eighteen seventy-three Historic Engine House continued to be maintained by the city or donated to a nonprofit to preserve. We really feel like this is an integral part of the history of Shelby. It has a whole lot of history in its own right and we feel like that it should be preserved for the good of the city. Excellent, please. So what we're proposing as the next steps is to begin a reuse discussions between the commission and the CIC. They're a nonprofit and to this point, I asked Jake Penwell, who's the chairman of the CIC, I said, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I asked him, have you, is that part of the revitalization plan? Is that building part of it? And the building's on the map, but it hasn't been really discussed as, you know, what it could be used as at some point in the future. And I, you know, we think that that discussion needs to take place and probably sooner rather than later to decide what, you know, what could be done with that building. If it's something that they want to include in their plan, you know, to restore and to use as an additional meeting space, as a space for festivals, I mean, you know, it could be anything like that. We're also suggesting that they, again, replace the lease funds into a separate account for maintenance and restoration of the engine house rather than having it go right into a general account. And then with that money, you know, complete the roof replacement, the brick restoration and the re-levitation of the gas line as soon as possible. I think those are doable projects. The roof might, depending on if it needs to be repaired or replaced, might be a high ticket item, but the brick restoration could probably be done partially by volunteers and then upper level by, by a company. So. And that concludes my portion.
Thank you very much. Do we have an estimate of how much it's going to cost to replace the road for some of these other restoration projects overall? Any idea of ballpark?
Well, for reference, a total replacement at City Hall is a hundred thousand dollars, so we're roughly about the same square footage, depending on if you do lower work on the addition that was added on or you just take that out or...
I will add, talking about the lease amounts, it is correct, that does go in the general fund as do just the general maintenance of that building. I know between the front pair of pads and then the age back repairs and all the other little stuff, friends spent fifteen to twenty thousand in the last couple of years just doing the, the, hey, we have to do this right now type of stuff. So, you know, as much as, as setting that money aside and doing designated accounts, we're already operating at a loss, so it can go in and right back out.
I guess that's the fundamental issue for me is how do we, how do we justify subsidizing the maintenance of a building as property of a city? And would there be a better use by either a nonprofit stepping up or a private entity stepping up to reuse it? We obviously need to do some kind of reuse. I guess the question I have is what kind of, kind of those uses has the commission explored and what kind of ideas do you have for reuse?
We, as I said, I would kind of put it to the wayside at one point, but, you know, we could, we'll notice out on Facebook, we've got a lot of different ideas about it. I do know, out of transparency, I'm with, you know, a historical group who, you know, could be interested in it, but, you know, it could be using a, it wouldn't be something that would be permanent because of the flooding. Or there would be ways of mitigating it, like if you, for example, bicycle museum, if you put bicycles in there, you could put them up on a three-foot level, you know. If you put other things in there, you could put them up, you know, three, on a three-foot platform and then you're not having to worry so much about the flood coming in. The upstairs, you know, we were asking about what the occupancy rate would be and we don't have any sort of that, we can go to the county and find out. So there's a lot of questions that we still need to ask in that respect. It could be a meeting room, it could be a place for special exhibits from the museum that's already there. We could bring over a few things and show them on a temporary basis during festivals. It could be a place where, an extra place where people could eat or there could be art exhibits. There could, there's a lot of things that could be done without having to do a whole lot of restoring the building, especially the down, the down area. Now, the one thing, one picture that I didn't show is that the engine bays had an open grate down the middle of them that actually flows into the river. So that would need to be something we need to be put over that so that, you know, nothing falls through and, you know, goes out. It served its purpose at the time because it was, you know, when the trucks came back and maybe they were wet or snow covered or something like that, then it served its purpose. But, you know, there, there were a lot of things and I think a conversation with the CIC and see how it would fit in with their plans for the downtown restoration or revitalization would probably be a good thing at this point.
Mr. Gates.
Joe, I'll put you on the spot. Do you have a quick and dirty idea of the existing floor in the main bay? What's, to get up above the floodplain level, what are we talking about? Foot, two foot?
If I remember correctly, the floodplain was, the actual regulatory was...
Yeah, what's on, what's on the map right now?
Three feet maybe, but there's marks and they're well above that. I mean, almost up, over four feet, wasn't it, Chief?
Five feet.
Five feet, yeah.
But, you know, since that's been done, there's been some cleaning of the river and, you know, we don't know at this point.
You'd get the five-hundred-year badge going back to five foot regardless of...
Well, that, that... I fully believe the city should not be a landlord and over the years have supported selling off any number of properties in the city. This, this is one that I, I think it would be futile for the city to try to sell to a private entity because we know that we've got that, the fifty percent. Someone who buys it, they can't put more than fifty percent of their purchase price into revival, into whatever they have to do. We only need to go down a one block to the former Stroms and, you know, I think there have been people who well intended there, but, you know, found out, okay, you know, it's a one-story building and if I have to raise everything up above the floodplain, I'm going to have people double over, you know, there's not enough headroom. Now, that's not the same situation here, there's plenty of headroom in the building, but the fifty percent rule still, still applies. And, you know, I had seen some of those suggestions and, and, you know, I give credit to people who, you know, have wonderful ideas, but, you know, it's one thing to suggest ideas when the money's not coming out of your own wallet, you know. So, you know, if I wanted to, you know, put in a restaurant in Shelby, I would never consider putting it there because of the, because of the risk. You know, bless the store owners who've stayed downtown and, you know, are dealing with that, but, you know, if I owned that building next to the Black Forest, when I heard, when I would hear the thunder break over Tyro, I would break out into a cold sweat. So I, I think that, again, I think that selling it would just be, you know, I can't see that any responsible person would, would buy it. You know, if someone wants to, you know, to store their vehicles in, that's one thing, but I think there's better uses for that building. So I think a partnership between the city and, you know, I know the CIC has its hands full right now, but, the gentleman next to you who's on the board, you know, can, can explain that. But I think that's, you know, that's a, that's a good starting point is to discuss with the CIC what can be done. In the short term, the suggestions about the bay on the east side, that one-story bay, that was built in the thirties, as I recall. Pardon? We'll look at that because there's a deed that didn't get recorded until very, very late. But, you know, that, that has no historical significance. The tower on the back, you know, you know, if it's tipping, that should, you know, set off, dare I say, alarm bells with this. So, you know, I think we've got a lot of good, good information to work with here.
Mr. Gates.
There are, there's a provision in the floodplain regulations for historic structures. Now, they have to read the definition of a historic structure. This one does, it's all that is made in district and so forth, where you can get a waiver of the fifty percent rule. Now, that comes with other things. It would have to be read on by the Historic Preservation Commission. They would have to say, whatever you're doing to this building is not losing its historical character. And then, two, the Board of Zoning Appeals is the appeal body of the floodplain regulations. They would have to issue a waiver. Waivers on floodplain regulations are very, very few and far between, but they are laid out for historic structures. My common conversation with our state records about floodplain, if we were to do that in the waiver, then they do things, you know, you're encouraged very much to do some medication measures that doesn't lose its historical, but you could lose future funding for when there's a flood, you know, the federal funding to help restore that like we got in oh seven will not be there or could not be there. I shouldn't say will not, but may not be there depending on what you do to that building. So, there is that. There's a whole, and I'd be happy to email that to council members, there's a whole brochure on, on that for historical structures. There's also, in the building code, there's actual, and I'm not very well versed on it because I get the building inspector, but there is a code section for historical structures also there. So, it may, may make it easier, but just remember, you can get five-foot water in
I want to just mention too that there are FEMA grants that can be gotten for medication too. I could go somewhere to get...
And as of today, we can remove the unknown equation of what superior had in mine superior in the service, they are not interested in purchasing the dope. So that was something that has always been hanging out there and we just got word here, might be sent it over to me by email, that they are not interested in purchasing the dope. But that was something we did, I really have written stone for saying.
Anyone else have, have others for discussion?
Are we allowed to say anything?
Please.
How long is the lease for?
She, she had lease, the, for the building. I did not, she said, you look at, you're talking about the lease from Superior?
I believe we renew that. I'd be wrong, but I believe we renew it every year.
So it's just an annual?
Correct.
I believe it's in the October timeframe is when we renew it.
Anything for the chief?
Most superior, anyone's down there, there's no other place to put them in the city. That is the only building. that is the only building. You, the fact that they're, they're twenty-four hours, you have to find a building, put the garages, bays, that are sprinkled enough with a fire pit, because now it's a dormitory facility, no different than the jail here, Shelby Fire, unless it was built, in this case, prior to the fire. So, I mean, so, that's the reason they stay, that there is no other option. We, look, I've helped them look, there's, there's nothing out here. For us, logistically here, it works perfectly, we're blocking half the way from each other, not even that, so it's very easy. As far as any other questions with the, you know, so I, I look for that, you know, lease, or the contract, the temporary investment goes for another two and a half years, two years, I think, for, I think for another third, two and a half years about, I think. So, I look for them to stay at least that long, so you, really, there's no movement, you know?
They're going to waste the court.
But if you guys have any other questions about the station, I mean, I live there, the place lost things, it is nice having insulation now, so, if you have any questions about those stations far away, I'd be more happy to answer.
Is, is the roof leaking?
The, the roof will leak on heavy direct, heavy rains, it depends which way the wind falls.
Okay, nice.
It's, they're definitely, Mr. Geis and myself riled over the addition, looking at the light out there, and it is definitely splitting. Apparently not the most, smallest gag up, up there, but it was definitely, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time out here, so, it's, it's, needs, something needs done potentially, but as of right now, you know, the nice thing with Superior down there right now too, they're mobile. They literally get in once they can take off. In our old days in Shelby Fire, we were calling people in, carrying things upstairs, we had our books, our manuals and milk crates, the main reason, we could grab them and start taking stuff upstairs. And luckily we don't have that problem now, you know, with them, they can get out very quickly, and it was relocating up with us, and then split on the river floods. Basically, that's the main thing with this, you have to look at is, the river's only so big. You know, we've done some things to try to help, it will flood again, it's going to happen. I just hate to see someone put that much time and effort into something that you know what's going to happen. How much do you put into it? I'm all for preserving history, I mean, I love history, I've done a lot with it, and goes off the hill either way, under strong case law, but it, it, it is what it is. So, it's not easy to say, you know, that's definitely, I guess, another point of view there.
But we're fortunate that Superior's in there right now.
Yes.
That's the best solution in...
Absolutely.
In the, we'll say, in the intermittent, in intermediate term.
Absolutely.
You know, how long do they wish to do business here? You know, they have a contract with the city, but they're getting no monies from the city. So, you know, as long as they're making, you know, what their corporate masters say is what they need to make here in, in northern Richland County to justify them having an operation here, you know, that's a good deal.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, they're out of Michigan, I believe, or Illinois, or, they have Illinois plates on the vehicles.
Yeah, corporate, it's, it's a modest thing.
Wherever.
Yeah.
But, you know, and, you know, the contract we have probably just has a thirty-day notification that if they decided to, I don't know.
I don't think, I don't think.
Most of them do, but, you know, they could be gone in relatively no time at all if they decide that it's not worth their, their time and effort to, to do business here. You know, I hope in the, at least in the intermediate timeframe, that's, that's not the case, but...
Houseman Gates, if the nail square on the roof? So I have a couple of questions. So, are we, we're obviously, we're losing money right now, but lease is extremely low compared to maintenance and all. The, is there an ability to renegotiate that when it's time for new negotiation, one? But also, because we've been in this flux, we've done year-to-year contracts, is there ability to go for a longer contract period and just handle it?
If you recall, we've at least set that lease agreement in place, it was on a form, a government form of, from the Beaumont, it was a group that, their guidance and legal guys, and I think Mr. I saw a photo too, that certain percentage of, what was that, some sort of index, but they were only allowed to pay so much per square foot for a facility, and that's what that came off to be, that square footage timed this amount, that was what they were, according to them, and I think it was legally reviewed, of course, from both sides, that that was an occupied wood and should and could be legal.
So, but what about the length of the contract?
It was the same that they put there, when Beaumont, the community, community was owned by Beaumont, Beaumont sold out to Superior. It was also with duration, they could only sign a year-to-year contract. So, yeah, one point the square footage actually went to, we're not going to use this portion of the base, but we're going to use this portion of the base, and so, all around, so, it was wonderful.
We can, we can pursue that, Mr. Martin, I mean, I'd say, I don't remember exactly how that was signed, I thought it was signed by the same agreements, but we'll take a look at that.
We can ask, the worst they can say is no, and we're no worse off than we are now.
True.
Well, I, I don't look at the building as being a cost center, and for this reason, if, if we make a profit, well, if, if, if the income from that building is greater than the expenses of the building, then we have to put it on the real estate taxes, and we don't want to do that.
Yeah, I'd say I definitely agree with that, and, you know, if we do end up in the black, I don't see there's any reason why we can't, you know, tuck on some of the, the wall, or even do some sort of project to keep us, so that we're not actually coming out ahead.
But at this point, we're about three thousand in the negative, and the list that we have here is quite extensive too, I mean, take that six thousand dollars, and if we put all of that for the next twelve years, you're probably not going to break even on the roof and all the tuck pointing and all the reconditioning and the taking down of the tower and all that kind of stuff, and those are not exactly what you call small-ticket items, where we can just, you know, have an electric crew do, do some demolition. We've, we've seen what demolition costs can run for small quote-unquote projects, so I, I don't think we're in any danger anytime soon of quote-unquote making a profit on it. The question becomes, is it, is it a justifiable cost for the city to subsidize it for as long as we choose to subsidize it? And it's always been my belief that the city needs to figure out what to do with the building and get it done sooner or later.
I have a question, as, as much as anything else, because I think I know the answer, but I don't for sure. If the city chooses to get rid of this building, they can either do it via sealed bid or give it to the CIC to act as their realtor, correct? I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's how it is. So if we do that, if we, if we go with the latter option and have a CIC, could they work it through their contract that EMS has to stay there as long as, as they want it with the, the buyer? I, I don't know the answer for that, for sure.
A whole other contract, right, because now we are the lessors, the city is the lessors, and then they have to make the CIC then have to create a new...
Or whoever, whoever the buyer, and if they didn't find a buyer, then I guess...
Oh, you're saying the CIC with the buyer with Superior, like a three-way deal?
Well, or anybody else, if it's a nonprofit, or, or anybody who wants to purchase it, say, you know what, you have to give them their lease, their, set them out for as long as they want, or something, they want to raise the funds.
What, what buyer would do that? Because the, the lease that's bringing in...
Yeah, it's, it's a...
Right now, is for the entirety of the building to include the second floor, right? Which, so you can't even say, the, the, the new owners can't even say, well, we'll lease the bottom part because it's the floodplain, whatever, whatever, and the second part, well, whatever, a restaurant or whatever, like, unless someone really just enjoys losing money, I can't see to where, I mean, that would barely pay for the property taxes alone, if it's a private building, let alone the, I guess if you're a nonprofit, maybe, because you wouldn't have to pay at least the property taxes on it, but...
Well, I think, again, the fact that the Historic Preservation Commission put so much thought into this, it's a great presentation, it puts the point on the pencil here. I think the fear of the commission would be, any of us, would be that it is, like the chief says, a win-win for the city, for the citizens, to have Superior or any private service right there, and getting, getting to the calls, but all the while that we're providing a wonderful service to our citizens, the building could be falling down in our ears, and we don't want that either, so it's a two-sided sword here, but to somehow find some solutions. But I think, as Houseman Gates said, for the, for the near, near, near interim term, I think it's something that's working, but I think if I'm reading right, Mr. Green, you have a futile advantage on more for ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty years.
Yeah, I, I think we recognize that too, and what we're really, you know, kind of looking ahead towards reuse, if the EMS isn't in there anymore, but as long as they're in there and there's no, no other space for them, then, yeah.
And some of these grants are available to municipal entities, that you mentioned on the first page.
Right.
So maybe in that interim period, maybe some of these grants would come into play to try to keep the building intact for any future use, if I'm reading you right.
Right.
But we're still looking at probably a forty to fifty thousand on the lease.
In, in matching grants, so to speak?
Yeah, even with the matching grants, I mean...
Yeah, right, forty, forty thousand.
That's a city with a really, really, really cheap roof, that just needs repair and not replaced. And that, that's, that's the issue with me, is that we can, we're essentially the same place that we've been for the last however many years, this has been on our unfinished business, on our city council packets, you know? We, we have to have, if the city's going to keep it, we need to have an actual plan of what reuse looks like, and what reuse looks like to the point that it can pay for its own maintenance and support the existence of the building. And I'm sorry, putting in, you know, just putting in a museum isn't going to do that, you're not going to be able to make the income necessary from that, in that space, to, to be able to be sustainable. I mean, we've, again, we put in close to fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars in not big-ticket items, really, basic maintenance, and so it's, you know, what we have to have a good plan of what exactly does reuse look like, is that reuse actually sustainable for the operation of buildings? Bottom line is, we have to have people in the building, like, it's great that we have EMS in there now, because we all know that once people leave a building, whatever it is, the buildings decay faster, right? I don't know if it's oxygen circulating, or it's, it's, you know, seeing it time and time again. You know, you've got a great building, all of a sudden it becomes vacant in a matter of time, and that would be the worst possible thing for that building. So, the EMS situation is not going to go on a perpetuity, we know that. It could end in November, when we renegotiate the contract, and they say, well, we're not going to do it, right? We have no guarantees. I mean, have they reached out to us with a new one-year contract yet? That is coming up, I'm pretty sure, next month.
Their contract's for three years, with two one-year riders on, so, I mean, we're in two and a half, yeah.
We're talking two different things, though. That's for the lease, the service, the lease building is...
So, that, so if it's been two and a half years, because it was a one, it was a one year with two one-year riders, right?
That's only serve, this service.
Right.
But on the lease itself, that's a year-to-year, and they haven't even come back to us to start getting the ball rolling on another annual contract, I just, I'm just saying...
It just falls over into it, if, if, if no one disagrees, it just falls right into it.
Yeah, is, is there, I mean, there is, there is a world where this, they just leave in, by November of this year, is a possibility. I'm just saying, so that's, that's the suddenness that this could happen, is my point.
Then the conversation should...